We call a meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to order. We ask that you stand, and it's our tradition that we open our meetings with a prayer, and I'm going to ask Mr. Willa Lenore to open us with a prayer and Ms. Robinson, Boo Robinson, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Mr. Lenore.
Let's power for head. Holy master, we thank you this evening. We thank you for allowing these who have come, we pray your blessings upon this council meeting this afternoon. We ask that you bless everyone that are here and their families. We pray that you be in the deliberation as we take care of the city's business. And we ask that you be with us as we try to make the best possible decision as we possibly can. We ask that you please look upon the bereaved here this afternoon. You know who they are. I don't have to call them by name. We ask that you be with them and keep your loving arms all around them as they make their adjustments. We pray your blessings upon this parish, this state, and this country. In these blessings, we ask, in Jesus' name, amen.
Before we pledge and lead us to the flag, if you'll join me in a moment of silence for a family member of one of our Board of All the Persons, Mr. Floyd Flash Gordon, who was an outstanding citizen and public servant, worked for an industry here for many, many years, and he's the father of Mr. Eddie Gordon, and for Mr. Leon Brown, who's a deceased former employee of the city of Bastrop. Please join me in a moment of silence in their memory. Ms. Robinson?
Yes. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I have here a letter from Mr. Gordon acknowledging his appreciation and his family's appreciation for our acts and the resolutions and the support that we gave Mr. Gordon and his family during his father's illness and his death. I thank members of the Board of All the Persons for what they did during that time and Ms. Olive for attending and representing the city of Bastrop and presenting the resolutions from them. Mr. Gordon, you have our sympathies and our pledge to you and your family for their support as well as to the family of Mr. Leon Brown. Thank you very much for what you've done. Item number three. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll and let us determine if there's a quorum present?
District A?
Present.
District B?
Present.
District C?
Present.
District E?
Present.
Here.
Our prayers, Mayor.
A quorum is determined and we can carry on the business of the city of Bastrop. There are no major announcements at this time. I did meet with the individuals who presented us with a proposal for doing our comprehensive plan, land use, and we are deliberating and developing the contractual relationship. Ms. Tanya Martin was in on that meeting. Mr. Vereen was out and Ms. King was involved in some other business, but we are moving forward with that project. The Fountain Project is moving along extremely well. They were working out there just a few moments, so we will be seeing water spraying very, very soon, and there'll be some other landscaping renovations that'll be appearing here around City Hall in the very near future. We're getting ready for the major cleanup in the city of Bastrop, and you'll be hearing from Keep Morehouse Beautiful, the folks on there, and the city crew is getting ready to gear up for that as we always are cleaning up the city of Bastrop, but we're going to be doing some special things during that time because we'll be more aware of the route that they'll be taking, and we'll be going through that process. We are participating as a city in some other ways. We're going to be sharing the cost of some dumpsters. The enterprise, Morehouse Enterprise, has been taking that project on solely by themselves, but we're adding some dumpsters this time, and we'll be adding a couple more, and we'll be involved financially in providing and the financial support of those dumpsters. This year, we have a unique problem in that we don't have the landfill available, the landfill available for folks who used to take stuff out there, so that's a work in progress. I've asked Mr. Hamlin and Mrs. Robinson to represent the city of Bastrop along with members of the city of Bastrop staff with the police jury. Mr. Floyd Tamboli with the jury, who's chairing the solid waste committee, called and wanted to be sure that the city was involved in the development of the contract, the contract that has to be renewed. And I've asked Mr. Hamlin and Ms. Robinson, as I said, to represent the Board of All the Persons along with us and other members of the staff, and we're hoping that we will be able to have input. So we've had a discussion. So members of the Board of All the Persons and citizens, we think we know, we think we have an idea as to concerns and issues as it relates to solid waste in the city of Bastrop, so we'll be presenting them. But as always, citizens are encouraged to inform us as to what your desires are. We don't know what cost will be involved, and we're hoping that the bid, there'll be an RFP, request for proposal, and bids will be submitted from various vendors, hoping that there's some competition. As I appreciate it, there are expectations that the cost of the solid waste collection will be increased because of fuel costs. They can't do like energy and just slap a fuel adjustment fee on us for that, but we're expecting the cost that the police jury will be incurring will be higher, the cost that will be projected will be higher. I don't know how they're going to handle that because they have X number of dollars that comes in. That's from the half-cent sales taxes parish-wide. I don't know what they're going to do if the bids that they get exceed the revenue that they have coming in. But I think it's important, and we appreciate the police jury realizing how important it is to have input from the city of Bastrop, all the persons who represent the city of Bastrop citizens in developing that contract so it can be one that, you know, that works. Item number five is to approve the minutes of the January 10th regular meeting.
Mayor, I looked over them. They seem to be in order, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from January 10th, 2008.
Mr. Lenore makes a motion.
I'll second Mr. Lenore's motion.
Mr. Gordon seconds his motion. Is there any discussion? If in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, and the ayes have it. We had a special meeting on January 22nd, 2008. You've had a chance to review these minutes. What's your pleasure?
Mayor, I make a motion again that we adopt the special meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2008.
Mr. Hamlin, Mr. Lenore again makes the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Olive seconds his motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, the ayes have it. Mr. Hamlin, the finance committee met?
Yes, there, Mr. Mayor. We went, we met and went through the bills and claims for the month of whatever, and I make a motion that we accept audit 084157.
Mr. Hamlin makes a motion.
I'll second.
It's jointly seconded by Mr. Gordon and Mrs. Robinson that the ordinance number 084157, bills and claims for the month of January, be adopted. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, the ayes have it. I think Mr. Mark Vereen is away at a meeting, is a state Main Street meeting, so he's not available to make a report. Ms. King, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Please come forward. Ms. Kay King from the Morehouse Economic Development.
I will be brief, thank you. I did, I passed out some papers at the beginning of this, and this is something that I've been entertaining, and I want, this is actually city business, so I don't want to proceed too far into this without making the city alderman and you, Mayor Hawkins, aware of something that I think that can be useful, a useful tool to the city. One of the problems that we've had, I say it's a problem, one of the questions that we've had is that we have a huge gap along 165 that was not included in our renewal community, and many of the complaints that I get when we talk about incentives centers around the fact that there's not any incentives for that area, that large commercial area from about the Cooper Lake Road out to Walmart. So there's no real, other than enterprise zone, there's really no benefits available there for any kind of large development. But this is a program, I passed out a sheet that's called a restorative tax abatement program that the state of Louisiana has. The only stipulation on this, however, is that the property that applies for this abatement of their taxes, which is a freeze of the taxes, is that the property needs to be located into an economic development district or a historic district or something that is actually created by the community through ordinance, like the historic district documents, the ordinance that we have. Now, what this does, it allows a company who's going to make a major expansion, and I'll give reason why it needs to be major, but a major expansion of an existing building or a major improvement to an existing building, an opportunity to request that their taxes, their tax assessment be frozen at the pre-construction level for five years with an option to renew that for another five years. But what takes place, they file an application, and there are some application fees, like $100, advance notification, $400 for the application, another fee that has to be calculated. So the project would have to be of a significant level that, just small improvements and things that would not be beneficial to do this. But we do have some major renovations pending in this area, and I have been asked once again about incentives. So I've studied this area, and I have, in the area that's on the area photograph is primarily the East Madison area, and I have looked at an easy way to describe an economic development district, and there's really not one. The property, the properties are not real consistent in there. There's no roads running parallel to the road. So in the historic district, they use the square and all the blocks that were adjoining the square. So my idea is to just say that we create this district for all properties that are adjacent to West Madison, East Madison, and East and West Jefferson. That gives us the whole 165 from the city limits west of Bastrop to the center line of Marlette. And the reason I say the center line of Marlette, we understand that the city limits now goes out to Walmart, but there are, but there are really no large buildings that are inside the city limits once you get past Marlette. So this is something that, of course, it's going to have to be created by the city, and it requires a board of commissioners. You could possibly use the same board of commissioners that you use on the historic district. What happens is after the application and the state approves the project, then they send it back to the city authority, which is in this district, and it has to be approved at the local level. And that's the reason that I see, as I've looked through this, that that's the reason that it has to be located in some type of district where you have a board of commissioners that are designated to review the project, make sure that it's in the best interest of the city to do this. It's not a sure thing. It could be declined by the city. But this is something that, as we look at some of our larger buildings in the community, even buildings that I'm saying in this whole sweep of the 165, that some of these buildings might be in the renewal community also, but some of those areas are the hardest to develop and to get people to spend money in those areas. So this gives a little extra incentive that could save people thousands of dollars in their taxes. In saying that, it costs the community that thousands of dollars in taxes for at least the next five years. So this is something that I would like to consider. I didn't realize that Mr. Lawrence would not be here, and this is some, we're going to have to look at some legal issues in this, but I just wanted to present it to you so that you could discuss this and see if it might be something that you're interested in taking advantage of to try to encourage urban renewal. When I say we're a rural community, but we have many of the same problems that urban areas have in that it's, sometimes it's easier to jump on down the road to the next track than it is to redevelop existing buildings, and so you end up with urban sprawl as the new developments continue to move out, so out away from the core of the city. So this would be something that I would consider a proactive move to try to stimulate some redevelopment in some of the existing areas of the community.
Ms. King and I talked about this, and most of the inquiries that she was receiving were from businesses on East Madison, 425 going east, and I suggested to her that we be inclusive and include 425, 139, north and south, and 165, east and west, because those are our major business corridors. It makes sense to do this. When we were involved in developing the renewal community and being involved in the application process, the state put some stipulations into the designated census tracts that eliminated census tracts that were the most highly potential industrial and commercial developed areas. We were able to go back and through state and congressional help, get the mill in it. If you remember, many of you who've been paying attention realize that International Paper Mill was not in the renewal community, and they were not able to take advantage of the benefits that went along with it. With some congressional and state legislative and gubernatorial help and a lot of lobbying from the locals, we were able to get that census tract that the mill isn't included, but that left out significant buildings out, as Ms. King has said, out East Madison. Our industrial park, the bulk of our industrial park still is not in the renewal community, and those businesses that can possibly locate there can't take advantage of that. Businesses, land that can potentially be used up and down 425, 139, and out West Madison and parts of East Madison can't take advantage of the credits and benefits and discounts and all other stuff that go along with it. So when she presented this idea, I said, well, let's be inclusive and get the major corridors in there. We would, in essence, if an existing building had $300 in property tax as of the end of the year 2007, and they made significant renovations in billing and all that kind of stuff, that $300 property tax would be frozen at that point, just as an example. Am I correct?
That's correct.
If they made improvements in the billing and the tax would be $2,000, that $1,700 in additional tax would be in limbo. It wouldn't be charged for five years, which would encourage businesses for five years times $1,700 a year. That's some significant savings, and they might come in and say, okay, we'll build here. From a business perspective, every dollar helps. It would be a way to attract folks to those areas. I support it. There's some details that need to be worked out, and I hope that you consider it positively as well, but we would need to come back and give you more information as it's developed, right?
Right. I would need to talk with Mr. Lawrence, and one of the questions I have is about developing a legal description for this.
Sure.
Because it could be quite extensive to try to describe this.
Yeah.
And if there can be any gaps, because we've got the historic district and we might overlap.
Details have to be worked out.
And, but I do.
But the concept, I think, is what we're talking about tonight, Ms. King, right?
Yeah. I do think, and like I said, I didn't want to just continue to work on this and not advise the city that I was working on something, and then you say, no, we talked about this and we don't want to do it, so.
So what happens is, the Board of All the Persons has to be willing to be in a position to say, we would be willing to enter into a program that would be giving up some property tax, knowing how much we need property tax. But in the long run, the more businesses that are developed, and you know, we generate revenue from two sources, property tax, sales tax, and looking long range down, we'll have the option, as I'm reading in here, it can be renewed more than five years. That option is entirely up to the body.
It's up to the local body.
But if we get more businesses in here, they produce more sales, it'll keep those dollars from going to Monroe, which I think in the long run would benefit us. So she's making us aware of what she's working on, and I think that, I hope that you will allow her to continue and report back to us as she makes progress, because this is what we're all about, is growth. Any questions?
Yes, questions.
Let me go with Ms. Robinson first, but Hamlin.
Will this not come under the agreement that we had with the company out of Shreveport to redo like ordinances? Can we put that under that umbrella?
That's.
This is not really a zoning ordinance.
This, this, once this area is developed, it would be labeled as commercial as far as land use is concerned.
Yes.
But from the taxable perspective, they wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Okay. Right. We can almost, Jessica gave me a copy of the historic district. We can almost look through that historic district and develop an ordinance on this. You know, and one of the things that people, when they come to us, they.
Okay, but that's a little bit, but then that's your question, no.
Okay.
Okay, I don't want to go too far.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Hamlin.
If I understood you correctly, we talked about giving up, giving up property tax, but if I understood you correctly, we won't be giving up property tax as it is. We'd be giving up new taxes.
You would be, yes.
Increasing taxes.
You would be giving up the new taxes.
So we're getting the same money that we've been getting for the next five years.
That's correct.
That's true. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? The concept is what we're trying to get today. Do you agree to, are you in agreement with allowing us to continue at this progress?
Right.
Motion?
No, sir. No motion is required, but thank you, Ms. King.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All righty. Mr. Lishfield, you say you didn't have any updates for us today?
Thank you.
Thank you. The airport is alive and well. Miss, and the star of our show tonight is Ms. Cindy Haynes. It's time for our audit report. I'm sorry, we gotta get, we gotta get PowerPoint capable up in here. Is that a very significant increase in cost?
I don't know. Jake Kuskin, where'd you go?
He's gone.
Jake's retired. Jake, he no longer exists. There's a switch and then.
I think the other take are better.
But what should we do?
Nothing. Same thing, same.
He says one, two, three.
I know.
Turn these off. These over.
That's probably closing off.
Turn these off.
We can see mayor.
Yeah.
Turn the ones back on. Thank you very much.
Okay. Seems like every year they have the same story, same song, which was the day we said.
Let me get, let me help you one more time. Somebody come and turn that black knob so it can focus a little bit on this.
It's not on there?
No. I know my eyes are bad, but I think it's out of focus a little bit, isn't it? Isn't that better, y'all?
Yes.
I know I can't see, but.
But we had one major accomplishment this year in that we were able to implement and report under the new standard, GASB 34, that's been out for 34 years, that everybody in the city has worked so hard for. We now have all of our capital assets, infrastructure, I shouldn't say all our infrastructure, all of our infrastructure that has any remaining depreciable life on it, we now have that on the books.
Yes.
So we're ready to go on that. The next major thing coming up is GASB 45, where we start reporting long-term post-employment retirement benefits, but we still got four or five years before we have to implement that. So he's gone and has already begun working and researching and becoming knowledgeable of that. But like I said, the city of Bastrop has been working on a relatively, you could say, minimal $10 million budget for at least five years and probably 10 years. This year, or for the year-end, June 30, 2007, just for the general fund, this exclusive sewer use fee fund, the sales tax fund that is basically collecting sales tax that are dedicated strictly for street improvements, and this excludes any debt proceeds, like the certificates of indebtedness that was issued for the Walmart project. This excludes this, which is just basically revenues that are generated for, we might just say, day-to-day operations. And we can see, once again, we're basically, we're at $11 million now. But you can see, as Mayor Hawkins said, while ago, the majority of the city's revenue comes from taxes. Seventy-five percent of our revenue is generated by taxes. The next major source is licenses and permits and intergovernmental. Now, intergovernmental at 12%, will vary quite a bit, well, maybe not quite a bit, but some from year to year, because a lot of that is state funding, from the capital outlay, LCDV, whatever. So depending on the state, their situation, but the city usually has 10 to 15 percent. Sometimes, I would say, pre-Katrina, sometimes that, you know, might be 20, 25 percent. Okay, so we look from, as taxes being our main revenue source, then let's see how those taxes are broken down. Well, that's the same one. Put the one up there. Here we go. Okay. From our resources of taxes, we see that sales tax is 60 percent of the revenue from taxes. So that's what they're talking about here. We may give up an increase in property taxes for a few years, but those new businesses would generate more sales tax, and we will know probably Walmart's been up, what, about a year? And another year from now, we'll see, hopefully, you know, a large increase in our sales tax. But we've got to remember, too, that 50 percent of that increase has got to be used for debt retirement. But once we get that debt paid off, hopefully in less than 10 years, then the city should really see some increases in their revenues. The second largest source is from landlord taxes, and then the almost 5 percent is from grocery receipts. That's franchise fees, et cetera, very small amount. Okay, now we'll turn and look to the expenditures, and first we'll look at them based on functions, we call them, such as whether it's for personnel, insurance, maintenance, whatever. And we'll say that the majority of them, almost 60 percent are from personnel, but I think that's very common, and whether you're in a governmental entity or a local privately-owned business, the majority of your expenditures are for your personnel. Now, personnel includes the salaries themselves, health insurance, retirement, Social Security, Medicare, et cetera. The insurance that you see at the bottom, the 13 percent, that is not health insurance. That is liability, workers, not workers' comp, but liability, extensive things like that. It's not, it's not related to personnel. And then from there, it's split pretty, you know, into small amounts, from 10 percent on our sewer contract, that's for, is it Viola? Yeah, Viola Water, North America, maintaining or maintenance and operation, et cetera, on the sewer system. Okay, then to. et cetera, on the sewer system. Okay, then to look at the expenses a different way by department. So we take these same expenses and we break them down by department. Okay, we see that general government, police, and fire basically expend seventy-five percent of the money in the general fund. Like I said, again, this is not the sewer use fee or the street program, which they don't have a lot of personnel salaries or anything like that. But we can see that, again, the general, police, and fire constitute about seventy-five percent of the total expenditures. Streets, sewer, recreation, and then all others, and all others is building maintenance, recreation, health, and sanitation. And again, you can see that our general fund current expenditures are still at ten million, basically. Okay. All right, this is just a comparison between the budget and the actual. And again, we'll see that the actual was ten and a half million, the budget was basically ten and a half million. So we're staying very well within the guidelines, within our budgetary restraints. Very, you know, like the general may have went over a little bit, but, you know, police was down a little bit. Overall, we're well within the budgetary confines. Now, I might add that in this last year, back to the Walmart project, we borrowed one point five million dollars, or we issued certificates for that amount. We expended one point four, basically, million. We had a hundred thousand dollars left, and that money, you know, is being held in escrow, or was being held in escrow at this point in time. It's probably being, in the process of being returned to Walmart in payment of the debt. So none of that is up there. And the reason I didn't include, because that's just kind of a one-time deal. We won't, hopefully, we won't have another Walmart supercenter for very many years. Okay, and looking at these, basically the same numbers in a different way, we look at a five-year comparison. But the two thousand and seven part of the graph, if we added those up, this is the same total amount of expenditures that we've been talking about for the last three or four graphs. And again, you can see what very little changes are happening from one year to the next. Like I said, one department may be up a little bit, but, you know, there's another one that's down a little bit. Like I said, I think everybody's doing a good job of staying within the financial, and I hate to use the word constraints, but basically that's what it is of the city. Okay, any other questions, or any questions?
We were not in the red.
No.
We didn't spend more than we had.
No, sir.
Thank you.
No, sir.
Sounds good to me.
And I hope, did that get their audit report? Okay, we don't have time to look for those if you have questions, be sure to follow.
Any directions, any directions?
I'm saying, everybody's doing a good job of taking care of their financial responsibility.
So we should not hear from the legislative auditor in a negative manner?
Probably not at all.
The normal, the normal citations.
They are going to respond to all of any audit that's sent down, but I think Ms. Gold has already, and has drafted her letter, we're just waiting, and I have not, I do not submit a report to them until I submit, or, you know, present it to you guys.
There's...
It might be a week, maybe a month or two.
There's some citations that we get every year, like segregation of duties and all that kind of thing. We're not big enough.
Exactly.
We're not big enough to have one person handling one particular thing. There is some overlapping, and we do encourage multitasking because we're so small.
Yes.
So, but from an auditing and perspective, that's something that we constantly get slapped on our hands about, but we expect that, and we know that. But we take internal activities, internal control activities, to be sure that they don't cause us any problems, but you have to mention that.
Exactly.
Right.
But the way it's like, Arthur's not going to give you all our time about that, because I perceive it's very, it's very common in all small, or it is common in all small businesses.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Haynes?
Hey, we don't have a copy of that diagram in this book.
Oh, Arthur was my assistant, I won't... I'll get you one, okay?
Okay, I think...
Mr. McKee was out ill, so he's on.
Okay, okay. Do we need to accept this report, or whatever? What do we need to do with this other than hear it?
Yes, if you don't have to make a formal...
Okay, okay. I take this opportunity to compliment and express my appreciation to the staff, to the clerk's office, and department heads, because she used the term constrained, and I'm constantly restraining you. But under the circumstances, limited budget, and with great demands, I definitely express my appreciation for the way that you handle your business. Everybody wants increases in salaries, costs are going up, fuel costs are going up, equipment costs are going up, and you do an excellent job. You do an excellent job of managing and providing the level of services that you do provide with the limited amount of money that we do, that we do have. So I express, again, my appreciation to you, and I think the citizens of Barstrop, thank you as well for keeping the controls in place. It's not comfortable, but this is what we have to work with, and this is what we do, and I thank you again for doing that. Okay, item number eleven. This is something that we've seen before. My reason for putting this on the agenda is, it's time, and we've had inquiries from vendors who sell fireworks. We've had inquiries from them as to when and if they can purchase licenses. And in fact, I think, if I remember correctly, staff, someone sent a check-in, someone sent a, someone sent a check-in to apply for that license, and we returned it because we were not, we hadn't, you had not made a decision as to what our position was going to be on the sale of fireworks. We've had presentations before, for and against those folks who feel that fireworks should not be displayed. We've talked about incidents that have occurred in the past. You've heard reports from the fire chief, from the police department, and I think we all monitored fireworks usage during the Christmas holiday. I think a lot of folks thought that they had been banned, and I didn't hear as many fireworks, except for New Year's Eve, as I usually do. So it's time for us to make a decision whether we're going to take action to ban fireworks, or whether we're going to take no action and continue the way that we are. The decision is whether you want to take action or not, to change what's already in place. And if you take no action, then those folks who want to buy licenses to sell fireworks under the permitted regulations will be able to buy those licenses. I appreciate it, there's a process that they have to go through to buy from the state as well. So there's some things that they need to do. It's not just us that's involved. They need to take care of that business with the state so that they can take care of that, then buy from here. We open for discussion and/or action.
Mayor Hawkins?
Ms. Olive.
Taking in consideration the expressions that have been made to this board, looking at senior citizens, and the noise that fireworks present, but yet we don't want to deny the children the pleasure of enjoyment. Safety has been another thing that has been brought up, the litter, but in all the things that have been brought up, the bottle rockets keep rearing its ugly head. So I'd like to make a motion that we continue the fireworks, with the exception of bottle rockets.
Mr. Olive has made a motion. Is there a second?
A second motion.
Ms. Olive made the motion, and Mr. Hamlin seconded the motion to allow fireworks with the, with that ban being placed on bottle rockets. Is there any discussion?
One other point I'd like to make, in that we're looking at continuing this, I would ask that be stricter regulations on hours, and also posting these regulations at the sites that sell these products. Would that be acceptable?
If that's in your motion?
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to make that a part of the motion.
Okay.
Mayor Hawkins?
Ms. Robinson?
I think we all got a list of names. I have no idea where this come from, who signed them, and when it was done. There are still those that feel like that it shouldn't, that we should stay with the fact that we tried to stop it. Before we do anything, I really would like to investigate a structured show. I think Mr. Vereen had talked to some people at one time, and it wasn't as expensive as we thought, but if this list of people were interested in having something where everybody could go and see if we could find the place, I would like to investigate that before we make any other decision, to stop it or go forward or whatever.
Okay, as a point of information, there has been a contribution made, as I appreciate it. Some funds have been acquired for a festival, and as I understand it, these funds can possibly be used for fireworks displaced. So I don't think we're talking about a either-or. The display for the, I think it was Independence activity, Fourth of July activity, the display can still happen whether or not there is a ban or fireworks are permitted. And I don't know if I'm hearing you say, if, are you looking at the possibility of having a public display instead of having, instead of allowing fireworks? Is that where you're coming from?
If we could, I mean, we got a report, I'm trying to find it, because there was a lot of things on here, about how many police calls, how many fires, how many homes were destroyed, and it was, to me, it was a significant amount.
Okay, okay. But again, I think the decision needs to be made. I don't think if you, if you allowed fireworks, that doesn't mean that you can't have a display. If your proposal is that we disallow the sale and use of fireworks and have a public display in its place, I think that's a whole different situation. But I hear your point. Let me make a, I want to make a question, excuse me, to Ms. Olive concerning her restriction. And I discharge fireworks, they've been a part of my history. And this, what I'm saying is not for or against. I went up this past year, my granddaughter and daughter called about eight o'clock on New Year's Eve and said, "You're going to shoot fireworks?" I said, "Yeah, coming," and they said, "Yep." So I went up and bought. I like to buy the stuff that goes up and makes a lot of noise and whizzbang and all that kind of thing. And I don't know, and I cleaned up my stuff in my yard and in my street, but when I shot the stuff up, the balls, and I did the forty-eight salute, peace salute, and the forty-six, I made noise in my neighborhood, woke up folks, I did. But that was stuff that fell down from that, and it was emberring. So I don't know if banning bottle rockets would be a solution to the aerial stuff that can come down and start a fire, if that's the reason for not having the bottle rockets. That's not concerned. Would banning fire, would banning bottle rockets be an answer to especially the fire possible hazard that might occur? Would that be a Band-Aid, or would it be a pacifier, or would it be meaningful? I think we need to be sure that we're not banning bottle rockets, but folks still shoot stuff up in the air. Roman cannons, you know, those things can, I can, we used to, I don't know about y'all, I'm telling you about my history. We used to have Roman cannon fights. You shoot a Roman cannon or something, you can burn it up, you know. But, so, let's, if we're going to do something, let's put some real teeth into it, and so, help me, help me work that out. Help, be sure you're working that out as you do it.
Mayor?
Mr. Hamlin.
It was my understanding that the bottle rocket was about the most dangerous thing coming down with some type of flame on it, as I say, whereas those others, I'm thinking they basically finished generating in air all the, the fire that's on, spark that's on, whatever you want to call it. And I think that was the reason for banning the bottle rocket.
Okay.
Mayor Hawkins?
As long as you're comfortable with it. Ms. Robinson?
I'd like to put this on record. This is a five-year total. Revenue was twenty thousand dollars over a five-year period. Police calls were one thousand six hundred and twenty. Building fires were nine. Grass fires were twenty. Total fire calls were twenty-nine. I don't know how many people lost their house, or if it burned, or what happened, if it was a business or what. But for the police to have to worry about firework calls, and the fire department having to go out and do this for twenty thousand dollars over a five-year period, it's not worth it to me.
Okay.
Mayor Hawkins?
Okay, Mr. Gordon?
I've looked over the names on the list that was sent in to us. I don't know, I see a lot of names that are people with outside the city limits. I see a few people I know that are from the state of Arkansas. But in retrospect to the constituents that I serve in District C, I've had more calls asking us to stand against the sale of fireworks. So that's, you know, in retrospect to those citizens, that's the ones that I represent, and I think I'm going to stand against this ordinance. You know, for those citizens that have called me several times, some that sent letters, and have come to my house, come to my home. I, too, myself, enjoy shooting fireworks periodically, but in retrospect to the evidence and to the ones that have called, asking me to stand against this ordinance, that's what I'm going to do for my citizens.
One question, one statement, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hamlin.
I managed to go back and check. Any holiday, any holiday, most holidays, there would be an increase in police calls and fire calls. It just, it just happened.
Were you shooting or not?
Okay, all right. If there's no other discussion, we're ready to, I'm going to call for the vote. Okay, would you come to the podium and identify yourself, please, and you may speak to this board of all the persons?
My name's Mitch Hale, which I've visited y'all a couple, well, before the first of the year. And I own two pieces of property in the city, which we sell fireworks on. And I think you might keep in mind that, you know, if you outlaw these in the city, they're going to go right out to Walmart, across from Walmart there, buy them. You're not going to change anything, I don't think. You're just going to, you know, lose whatever revenue you got. And I've got another petition that we got out of our places. I think there's another two hundred and fifty people that, one of our places, have got, signed a petition for fireworks. So I think that puts that count to a thousand people that want to keep the fireworks, you know. You know, being that, you know, some of them may not be in the city, you know, I know Pat. But before you make the vote, I just thought I'd add that, that I really don't think you're going to change anything as far as people using them just like they've always used them. You're just going to change where they buy them at.
Okay.
So that's all I've got to add.
Okay.
Oh, happy Valentine's Day, too.
Gee, thank you. I'd like to make another comment.
You didn't bring candy and balloons and cakes and all that kind of stuff? Struck that from the record, then. I think the motion that we have before us is to basically allow the sale and use of fireworks in the city of Barstrop with an exclusion on the sale and use of bottle rockets within the city limits, and to post the regulations and time of discharge, require each vendor to post at his or her business site the time of discharge, and to require the law enforcement authorities to enforce those times. Is that basically your motion?
Yes, sir. Could I make another statement, Mayor Hawkins?
Yes, ma'am.
I really had to do some soul-searching with this. I'm not a person that enjoys fireworks. I had an experience when I was a child, so I haven't dealt in that since I was six years old. But looking at the population that we serve, and the people who have expressed an interest to me, I had to consider that as a factor in making this motion. Thank you.
Okay, all right, we're ready to vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose should say no.
No.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll?
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Olive?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
No.
Mr. Lenore?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
There's three, two.
The motion passes with a vote of three to two. And the motion is to allow the sale and discharge of fireworks in the city of Bastrop with the exclusion of bottled rockets. And we probably will need to be sure that we define what bottled rockets are and have an understanding with the vendors as to what they are so that there won't be any confusion. Our definition of bottled rockets and what their definition is might be different. So there needs to be some collaboration and some joint understanding of what it is that we're talking about. Okay? It passes. Thank you for your discussion and/or action. Item number 12. Unauthorized to mayor to sign the cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana for repairs of Central Fire Station. You remember that, and this is an ongoing problem. We have some serious problems with the roof at Central Fire Station. This has been ongoing for some period of time. And with the help of former State Representative Charles McDonald, we were able to get 200, and our legislative delegation, Mr. Al Barham and other legislators, we were able to get a $200,000 capital outlay grant, $200,000 in state funds for the repair of Central Fire Station. We received all the payment, all the paperwork that's necessary to make that happen. But it's necessary for you to give me the authority to sign this cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana for this process to continue.
Mayor Hawkins?
Mr. Gordon?
Upon your statement, I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 081231.
Mr. Gordon makes the motion.
I second it, ma'am.
It's been jointly seconded by both Ms. Robinson and Mr. Lenore. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no. The ayes have it. We also need to get permission to bid and to advertise for Public Works bids. Do you need to be specific or you just want that blanket permission?
Mayor, you skipped the number 13.
Did I? No, that wasn't one which, oh, okay, I did. I did. Let me go, let me go back then. Need to give a little background. The Recreation Department, is Mr. Tanze here? Mr. Alan Tanze has been given the assignment to coordinate the recreational activities of the city of Bastrop. And one of the programs that he's been involved in is a basketball program. And the program has far exceeded our expectations. And we have been using the Dotson Park Gymnasium. And we were using the gymnasium at the junior high school. And during the, during the program, the school board said that we couldn't use their gym anymore. And Mr. Tanze and I went to a committee meeting of the school board to appeal to them to allow the Parks and Recreation Division of the city of Bastrop to utilize their gym and track for a track program that we have. They required us to sign a lease agreement with the school board in order to use those facilities. And the document that you have is a lease between the city of Bastrop and the school board, which will allow us to use those facilities. They have been reviewed by our city attorney and they were compiled by the attorney for the school board. And that's the document you have. So I'm asking your permission to sign that letter, that lease agreement.
Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Hamlin?
Mayor, did you reach yourself?
Yes, sir. We're in an awkward position.
Sarah?
We're in an awkward position. In order to have the program, there are some concessions that we have to make, such as maintenance and things of that nature. I have some, there are some issues that I won't bring up. Some of you are aware. And I'll just say this. I'm trying to get the school board to enter into an intergovernmental agency agreement, which will allow the school board to use our facilities without going through this process as well as the city to use some of their facilities on an approval basis because we're both operating from public funds. I'll give you an example. The day after we went to the school board to ask them to allow us to use the gym, they called and to schedule games on our field and our park for their junior high school softball team. And we've never had this problem before. There's always been reciprocity. In the years past, whenever the opening of a school would occur and they need to have a new teachers' meeting, they used to use the municipal center without any charge whenever they needed to use facilities. So they have a, they had a policy. The policy said that facilities could not be used for non-school activities. And they were going by that policy. So this is why we had to go before them. And I said, "Well, you know, I don't want you to change the policy, but why don't you create and let us create an interagency, intergovernmental agency agreement, which doesn't force you to not have your policies as it relates to other folks." But governments do this all the time. Governments do this all the time. But they chose not to. So we'll be having some more discussions with them because, you know, even though folks think that I'm battling with other governmental agencies, we get asked all the time. You would be amazed at what other governmental agencies ask of the city of Bastrop, all the time. And we willingly accommodate them at cost, at our cost, from police department to Public Works to whatever it is. But there has to be some mutuality, some reciprocity, some getting along in this thing. And that's what I'm hoping. But I don't know if you're referring to the requirement that we clean up after it wasn't provided?
Mayor, I read the whole thing.
Yeah, I read it.
And it's, I'm glad we only asked them for an outdoor track and a gym that was built in 1950s.
Yeah.
One thing in particular. If you read it, on page two, it says gymnasium and track. It did not say anything about stadium. Now, if we had those people down there for a period of time during the day, what? Does that automatically include restroom, anything, because it says track?
And that was, that was one of the discussions that was had. They don't want us to be able to go into the dressing room under the stadium. So we have to use the restrooms that are on either end by the concession stands and using the bleachers, the stadium seats and all that are allowable. The restrooms under the stands, but not the dressing rooms in the stadium itself. That was part of the discussion.
Mayor?
I mean, be sure Mr. Hamlin is finished first.
That's it.
But your feelings are similar to mine. Ms. Robinson?
What age group are we talking about here?
We're talking about kids. And it just depends. The basketball program is very, very young. Nine through 15?
Nine to 15.
Okay.
So most of the-
But before, though, they had younger kids. They went as six, something like that?
They were, yeah, five and six.
Five and six-year-old. So five and six to, it's, you know, and depending on who comes out for track. It might be high school kids coming out to track.
The point of this, my question was, these kids go to that school already, some of them. So what are they going to do to them after hours that they wouldn't do any other time?
Point well taken.
Another part on that, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've been going out to the gym. And it's amazing to me at the number of parents in that gym.
Totally so.
Those kids not out there by themselves just running loose like they're wild.
Totally so.
They done that. Many parents that you had kids out there.
Mr. Tanze and Ms. Lenore, who worked with it from staff here, tell me that in most cases, and at that age, especially with the little kids, parent don't turn their kids aloof and come out there. So there are usually as many, almost as many parents as there are kids. The parent, grandparent, you know how parent folks follow. So as I said, I don't know, other than the fact, and I go back to, it is a policy that they have as part of school board policy as it relates to the use of it. So technically, that's where they are. As far as what has been happening before with no problem. And your sentiments are exactly the same as mine. Mr. Lenore?
I was just about to say, I would be glad to get some of the youth off the streets and involve them in something during the summer. And they won't be out into other things they should not be into.
During the year as well.
So that should have been positive.
During the year as well. Absolutely. Your statements are exactly the one, they parallel and mirror those statements that we made to the school board committee.
Mayor Hawkins, this, this contract, or this lease agreement is for a term of one year. Is there any allowance for renewal on it?
It's apparent that we're on trial.
Did I say something in about five years?
Yeah, I think.
Did I say? Looked like I saw a five in or something. I don't know. Maybe that was something else.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion.
Mr. Hamlin does.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gordon. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, and the ayes have it. Now for Public Works. This is an annual situation, annual thing. Well, we buy everything that we use in Public Works. Asphalt, bridge, timbers, rocks, gravel, all that. So we need permission to advertise for bids for Public Works items.
Okay. I make a motion. Have we been given permission to advertise for Public Works items?
Mr. Lenore makes the motion.
I second.
Mr. Gordon seconds his motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no, the ayes have it. We need to, let's see, do liquor licenses. No liquor license applications. Thank you very much. Mrs. Andrews is in the audience. I think she was here at our last meeting. And we're having our engineering firm take a look at your situation because it's beyond our capacity. So it has not been swept off the table. And I know with this rain that we've had, you probably have a lot of devastation over there. We rode by, took a look at it. We see what's going on. But please, please know that we, you are receiving attention. Is there any citizen, any other person, any other business first to come before this board of all persons?
Mayor Hawkins?
Ms. Olive?
I noticed Ms. Moran and one of her 4-H students and mother out in the audience. Would you recognize Ms. Moran?
Would you do so?
Okay.
Yeah.
I've been.
Okay. Okay. Would you come up and just, for the record, let us know who you are, bring your?
I invited them to, to the council meeting.
Okay. Tell us who you are and what, your address and what grade you're in and all.
I'm Ms. Chafford, that's my daughter Alexis. She go to Bastrop High.
Okay.
She's in ninth grade, she's 4-H.
Okay. And tell us your name. You need to speak so you can be on the record.
Come on up close.
Say again?
Alexis Chafford.
And what grade are you?
Ninth.
Is this a project that you're involved in or what?
No, sir.
You just wanted to see what we do up here?
Yes, sir.
You just wanted to be on TV, didn't you?
And who's that with you?
And if you'll step up, young lady, please?
My name is Jennifer Moran. I'm with the LSU Ag Center. I'm the 4-H and youth development agent. And Ms. Olive has been coming to our junior leader meetings and she's given us a workforce preparedness. And she told, and she came in January and told us about the city council meeting. So we just wanted to come and see what was the government.
Well, thank you. You with the 4-H?
Yes, sir.
Junior leaders?
Yes, I'm the 4-H agent for the parish, the 4-H, and then also youth development. I do other than 4-H. I can go into the schools and provide programs.
Okay. Now, members of the board of all the persons, we contribute on an annual basis, Ms. Goldman? To the extension office. You're in the extension office, right?
Yes, sir. I'm at the extension office.
And her activities are partly subsidized by one of the contributions that we make. We, I think we have, is it with that telephone bill or what? Is it just a general contribution? I can't remember.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olive.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, is there any citizens who'd like to make a comment to this mayor and board of all the persons? This is the time, if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to us and bring an issue, we welcome your comments.
Mayor Hawkins?
Mr. Gordon?
I'd like to take the opportunity and time as a council member and a citizen to thank the city of Bastrop, to thank the ones that work.